You're listening to the Good News Podcast with Jamie Holton, brought to you by NBUC.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Good News Podcast. So glad that you could join us today. We are in for a treat. We have as our guest today, our city councillor Charmaine Williams. Charmaine is a person of deep faith and just a go getter. We're going to cover topics like taking risks, how to bring joy during this Christmas season, and even racial reconciliation. So sit back, relax, enjoy it. Let's dive in. Welcome, everyone. Welcome. So good to have you as part of the Good News Podcast today. I'm Jamie Holton and very excited to have Charmaine Williams with us today. Charmaine, thanks so much for joining us. Really, really looking forward to this conversation today.
Thank you so much for having me. Good news podcast. I'm sure you've been sharing a lot of good news and we need that during this year, don't we?
Absolutely. That's partly why we started this. We said, you know, the gospel literally means good news and we just believe the world's desperate for good news right now in the middle of this pandemic. And hey, Charmaine, a great place I think to start would be, just tell us a bit about you and your family, if you could, your connection here in Brampton. Yeah, it'd be great to start with that today.
Oh, wow. My connection started when we landed here in 1980. And I was born in England and my parents and my dad, they're very risk, they're risk takers. They wouldn't say that they are, but they are. And so I do come from a long line of risk takers. My grandparents on my dad's side are part of the Windrush generation, where they left on the first Windrush ships from Jamaica and landed in the UK to start a new life. My mom moved to Jamaica for nursing and that's where she met my dad. And so I always say that they're risk takers. So they, they said, you know what, we're going to start a new life in Canada and they chose Brampton. So in 1980, we moved to Bramley and we were in the C-section and love Bramley. That's where we started our relationship with St. Joseph of Nazareth Anglican Church. Balmoral, and we still are faithful members of that church now to this day. And you know, I've just been a part of this community for a long time. And I remember when we used to call it Bramley and it's, we, all the sections of Brampton, tell me your section and I know where you live.
Exactly.
You know, and yeah, so I am a mom. I have five kids and that's been a blessing. Although it's been a challenging time right now, five kids during a pandemic, what a journey.
And because we're, as people can see, if you're, if you're watching this, some people might just be listening to this. So just to let you know, we're doing this virtually today. And we're in the midst of a lockdown and that's, that's probably what we want to play our part. But as you were saying before we started, Charmaine, you're at home, kids are, kids are at home right now, lots going on in the house. So you get it when people are talking about the impact of COVID, right?
Oh, absolutely. And, and that's why half an hour is good because I've got one watching a movie. And then all four doing their online schooling. So it's a little bit of peace and calm right now. Yeah, I'm thankful also for my husband as well. He's been a wonderful support and he, he's working, worked so hard. And you know, this is a time where you just, you have to start thinking and counting your blessings. Because you know, there are many people out there who are suffering the loss of family due to COVID or even just, you know, not being able to see their family all the time. So you know, I think about that quite often and just say, thank you, Lord, for the blessing of family that you've, you know, blessed me with. So.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's been a theme throughout for, for many people, just those simple things that we sometimes take for granted and, and as challenging as it might be, we experienced that in our house too with our three kids and just doing different things. I've done a Zoom call, I think I've said in every room in our house, including the garage. So it's challenging, but love it. Just like you love having the family around. And you know, it's funny, you talk about being from a line of risk takers, Charmaine. And I would, I would say my observation is the apple doesn't fall far from the tree because see that in you and love that about you. Think about risk taking, you, you taking on the role of city councillor. Tell us a bit about how that came to be, because that's a big step that you took and love the way that it's turned out. So glad that you're in this role.
Wow. Thank you. You know, I actually have to say, the first conversations about becoming a municipal politician started at Mayfield United Church. And I was working with Mayfield United Church as the Sunday School and Family Coordinator. And I, a good friend of mine attends that church, councillor Joanna Downey. And that was when she was telling me about her interest in running for regional councillor. And she's like, you know, Charmaine, you should do this. Why don't you run in the, the Brampton election at the same time? And I'm like, no, no, not for me right now. Cause I really enjoyed what I was doing and, and I, I still missed working and, and I still miss working with, in children and family services. So that's, that's my background, children's mental health. And I just said, no, that's not for me right now. And plus my twins were still little and you know, it just wasn't a good time. When I came up to the 2018 election, I had that life-changing experience. And I think a lot of us go through a time where you realize that life is short. And if you have dreams and desires, you should really start thinking about going for it. So five, six days after Malcolm was born, baby number five, I had a brain hemorrhage and it was pretty severe. I was in the ICU. I really, I couldn't see, I was not able to walk. And there were a few days, even really conscious. I, I woke up a few days later. And yeah, they said that I had a severe brain hemorrhage because I was losing a lot of spinal fluid. And my brain had herniated. It was about a centimeter away from my skull. That's how, it was like somebody pulling my spinal cord down through the base of my skull. And they said it was, thank God I got to the hospital when I did. And there was a lot of time to think in that hospital, you know, and there was a lot of people saying, you need to stay where you are, stay in bed, rest. But I'm like, I've got five kids. I need to connect with my new baby. I have to keep it moving. And so I got up, I got myself ready and you know, I healed. Yes, go have a snack.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
And yeah, so I, I really just had that mentality of survival. I need to get back. And, and if God isn't finished with me yet, there's a reason. So when the conversation around the next election came up, I had the full clearance from the neurologist saying, you know, you're looking good, everything's okay. And you need to live a healthy life. I said, all right, well, I'm on maternity leave. I've got the time. Why not go for it? And I did. And even when people were telling me a mom of five can't win an election, there was a lot of hate thrown my way. They said, you know what? One thing about having faith is you don't stress about the outcome of things. You just know the outcome is going to be what God intends it to be. And I just said, I'm just going to go for it. And if I win, that was God's plan for me. And if I lose, that was God's plan for me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm okay with that.
That's amazing.
But I won.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, I want to talk a bit about that, your role and how God's working through you in this new role. But, but for some of us who are listening today, who are watching this, this may be just what they need to hear today, that take a risk. We've, you talked about being a time of reflection. You came through obviously a very challenging health crisis in that moment. We're going through a crisis right now as a world. And in the midst of this pandemic, one of the things that's happening is I think many people are slowing down because of it and reflecting on their life and what is most important. So some people may hear this today and the message that you need is go for it. This is, this is your time and, and don't be afraid. And I just take a risk. It's okay to do that. And so love that about your story, Charmaine. How, how does your faith, because as you, as you've named a few times already here today, how does your faith, your relationship with Jesus, how does that impact the way that you do this role as a councillor?
You know, it really does ground me. And when I find when I get anxious and overwhelmed, it's a clear indication that I'm not as connected as I need to be. Because this environment is, it can take a lot out of you and it can really challenge your faith. Because you're around people that don't necessarily have faith. And, and you're around people that are motivated by very different things, you know, and that, that was a cup falling. I don't know if you heard it.
It's a beautiful sound. It means life is happening. It's all good.
It's happening all around. But yeah, I think it's a good, it's a reminder to me that, you know, I need to, I need to re-center because of how many, you know how people always say, you know, the devil's in politics, you know, and there's a real pull to do what you shouldn't be doing? And, and, and really be self-centered. You can definitely feel that in the environment sometimes. And you know, I just think that my connection to God is just, it's what grounds me. And it's a good reminder to, to remember his teachings. You know, oftentimes I have Isaiah, you know what I mean? No weapons formed against me shall prosper. Just keep pushing on, you know? And you know, I have it written on my wall, his will be done, you know? God is always in control. So just keep, keep my eyes on, on him and you can't go wrong. So.
Well, we pray for, for you and for, for Patrick Brown, our mayor, for the council. Like I know, we aren't the only ones, many churches in the city do. And just want you to know that we, we pray for you regularly. We have a 24/7 prayer movement where we have people praying every hour of the week. And we have a list of things that people are praying through each hour that they pray. And certainly our city leadership is part of that, that God would continue to resource, align, unite, give direction, you know, all those, all those things and.
Absolutely. And we need that prayer because even if you don't have faith, I always feel that way, even if though there are members of council and people in that corporation who don't have faith, the ones that do in the city are, are the ones that are still going to guide and, and move the energy in a positive direction. You know, and I rarely, sometimes I feel like, oh my gosh, you know, you know, is, is he listening? Is he seeing this? But then I have to remind, and that's when I feel like, okay, maybe I'm pulling away. When I read scripture and I'm reminded, yeah, he is, he is seeing this, but this is all a part of the plan. I can, I can sit back and be like, okay, don't, don't, you don't need to be into it too much. Just let God, just let God.
Yeah, that freedom, that freedom, freedom that comes and you can, you can survive really hard things, hard decisions. As you named, you know, lots of roles people have challenged and, and that, that lets us be free from those things that could dig at us inside that would keep us awake at night, eh? Those worries and fears and just trust God with them all.
That's right. And I'm not, I'm not perfect. I'm not perfect. But, and that's why I think we need those reminders and we need prayer.
Yeah.
Right? So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. You're very, very welcome. You're very, very welcome. So we've, we've come out of a Sunday, we're doing a series called Good News over December. Just happens to align with the podcast, but you know, we believe Christmas is a story of good news, that God chose to come in Jesus and we celebrate that birth and God's presence in our life and wanting to bring healing and hope to this planet. And so this, this Sunday, we would have talked about joy. And so I'm just curious, as a, as a team around the city, how you're experiencing joy, how you're trying to bring joy to our city in the midst of this pandemic? Because I know as we pray for you, it's a challenge in the midst of COVID, the decisions that you, you, you and the council need to make, the restrictions that we have in connecting with people. So how do you see God's joy rising up in the midst of all of this?
You know, I, just yesterday I was talking to the gentleman in bylaw department and, and you know, Paul Morrison and JP, they were so excited to tell me that their, their fleet and some of the people on their, their team stood outside a superstore over the weekend and collected over 2,000 pounds of food.
Wow.
And I think almost $2,000 or $3,000 worth of donations. The joy in his voice to say, yeah, it was, you know, we did this. And so many of, of the men and women on my fleet were so very happy and, and proud to have done this. So I think it's, it's that action of, of, you know, service. And it, and it's the service that you're doing when you're not getting paid for it. And many of our staff at the City of Brampton and many of us councillors, we do engage in service. Some of us talk about it, some of us don't. But I say, you know, when you, when you have actions of service and you go out and do it, talk about it because that joy is infectious. So I was so very happy for them. And you know, there are other, there are other people in the city who are doing fundraisers. The Zonta Club did the Pontetia Drive. And, and it was nice to be able to put, take a picture and share that, you know, and just saying, you know, we're raising money for women's rights and women's issues in Brampton and Peel. And, and another thing that we're doing is a big toy drive at the, at City Hall. So even though we aren't able to get together, there is still that, that feeling of being able to serve and give back to the community. And so that's really joyful for me. We're also, we've also done all of the usual stuff. The Santa Claus parade was virtual this year, you know? And that was really great to see. We lit the lights at City Hall and, and all done virtually. So we're still trying to bring that, that festive holiday spirit back into the city in our activities, even though we're just doing it at a little bit of a distance. So.
I love it. I love it, you know, and, and just love the way, yeah, like the Santa Claus parade was an example of just trying to still do something, even though we can't do it the way we normally, the normally, we normally would. And you know, just what you named there, Charmaine, about the joy of serving others. And that is the gospel. That it was, it was never meant to keep to ourselves, that we're, we're meant to share this blessing with others. And I agree, there's so many stories like that. That's kind of why we've started this Good News Podcast, because we, we generally feel that so often we hear the bad news. We hear the, we hear the, and we want to be very real about those things because we want to try to work to bring change that would prevent some of those, whatever it might be, crime or, you know, people who are fighting over a parking space. This stuff is what hits the news. What people don't hear is this good news, where people are doing good things to bless others and experiencing great joy in it. We, we have a program called Caring and Sharing where we'll support 75 plus families over Christmas. And, and it's just an amazing, it's not just us, we work with the community to do that. So the Brampton Firefighters Association just gave us a check for $2,000. For this, because it costs, you know, $30,000 to provide Christmas for all these families. From all over, everybody kind of joins in together. We've got companies that say, hey, let's, let's sponsor a family together as a company for, you know, and there's a lot of giving. And I think there is a joy in giving.
There is.
And we, if we, if we, if we realize right now, we have been given the, probably the biggest opportunity we've ever had before this Christmas, because the need has never been greater. And so let's rise up and respond and we'll experience joy as well as share that joy.
That's right. And you know, I, I find that because many of us are at home and not able to be in, in the face of people who are in need, or even those fundraising initiatives. That's why I think you, you're seeing so many people willing to give outside of a grocery store or, you know, willing to donate here and there. And I just, just want to make sure that we're always letting people know how, how they can give, how they can participate. And, and even the caring and sharing, if there's families, maybe we'll do one with the city or something, you know what I mean? Like let's, let's just make sure we're getting the message out there because a lot of people I'm finding, they actually really want to help this year. You know, because you know, sometimes you go to work, you go to the office, you bring some cans, you just do it, right? But that's not happening. So another, another area, there's even curbside dogs. His name is Peter Bertobois. I can't say his last name, but he wants to give out 500 meals. And so we're now, we're coordinating around Brampton, where he's got a food truck, so he's going to drive up, just hand out the meals and go to the next shelter, next place. So there, there are so many good people out there and we just need to spread the good news and, and yeah, just that feeling of joy. Cause you just, you just want to help. You know, so many, so many people need it.
Yeah, yeah. Love that. Love that. So for those who are watching or listening today, please share some of these stories. Whenever you share a story like this, you might inspire someone to join in. And it may not be, maybe not everyone can give. It's been a tough financial year for some people, but some people, but some people can give more than ever before. So it'll all, it'll all balance out in God's economy. It really will. But it doesn't have to be even anything big. Like maybe it's calling somebody.
Yes, exactly.
We started a little, little internal movement called Christmas Love and are encouraging people to call somebody every day over December, like call a different person. 31 days, 31 people, not an email, not a text, but to actually pick up the phone and call somebody. And several things are happening. One, people are surprised to get a phone call because nobody calls anymore.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
And people are loving it. And, and, and people who are making the calls are loving it. So that would be a simple thing that people can, who spread joy. Call somebody and it's kind of a prayerful activity to get up in the morning and say, hey, God, who are you? Who do you want me to call today? It's, it's kind of fun. It's kind of fun. So lots of ways to spread joy, eh?
Yeah, that is such a small way, but it's a impactful way. I love that.
Yeah, same, same. Yeah. Well, Charmaine, I just, I just have so much respect and love for you and, and really glad that God has called you to this role at this time in, in our city. And we were talking earlier, you and I, that it's, it's a pretty unique time for you to be in this role, especially what's happened this, this past year around racial justice and racial reconciliation. And there's a deep connection to joy in my mind, because there is joy in bringing about justice. And, and have seen you working at that throughout this year, not just because of what happened this year, but, but certainly it's intensified. And just maybe love to hear from you a little bit on how God is using you in this role and some of the ways that you think we all could participate in bringing about racial justice. Because it's, we're not done. We know that. We need to keep working at that and talking about that and more than talk, making that behavioral change. And so for me, I was, I would just want to recognize today that, that I am a white male. And so I don't understand fully, but I want to, I'm trying, you know, but I just, and I have had something called privilege and I just want to name that. That's been a huge eye opener for me that, this year. And just can't have this conversation today without talking about this and, and wanting to work together at this and appreciate the role that you are playing around this.
Wow. Thank you. And, and you know, like I said, God, it's always in his plan. He, there's a reason why he's put me in this role this, this term. He probably knew that there's going to be some life-changing things and, and some hard questions that we're going to have to be able to answer. And some major behavioral shifts. And I am the first black woman on Brampton City Council. And 2018 is when the city decided to put me in there. And, and that's the residents decided to put me in there. And so I'm, feel very honored and blessed to be in this role. But then there is that part of me that is sad, that it took 2018 to be the year when we decided to have a black person in this role. Why did, why did it take so long? A myriad of reasons, you know? A lot of people, I always want to encourage people to read and, and learn about what systemic racism is, learn about what structural racism is. Those are two key concepts. Read the pedagogy of oppression. It's an excellent book to understand how the oppressed can become the oppressor. And how, you know, we as a society have to really be conscious about our unconscious bias. Right? And, and so, and if you don't know what that means, that's another thing to look up and read too, right? It's a time for education and, and self-reflection. How am I contributing to, to racism and racism idea, racist ideas and beliefs here in the city? And so I, I think, you know, the best thing that we could be doing as a society is ensuring that there's always room at the table.
Yeah.
I don't care what party you belong to, just as long as your party is representative, as representative of the city that you live in and the community you live in. I don't, I don't care, you know, what corporation, what company you work in, as long as your, your company has people of all different races and cultural backgrounds.
Yeah.
You know, and, and you know, and it's little things. Some people say, well, why are we having so many flag raisings? Why are we having so many, you know, proclamations about this and that? And I said, because everybody needs to know they feel they are included. So if this term, we have hundreds and hundreds of proclamations and flag raisings, that's not a bad thing. That's a good thing. Because that means people are finally saying, I feel safe to speak about where I come from.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the pendulum will swing the other way, but then we'll find that balance because then people won't be fighting to say, I need to be heard. I need to be represented in this city. So as a black woman, you know, I, I have a different lens. I experience things very differently than you do.
Yeah.
And so when I get pushed back or when, when, when I question how somebody was treated or how I was treated in a certain incident, I, and I address it and I do bring up the conversation about race.
Yeah.
I'm a black woman. I've experienced racism. I know what it feels like. So I'm not pulling a black card or the race card. I'm pulling from my own experiences.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Even saying that she's pulling the black card or the race card is a form of racism, a form of oppression.
Yeah.
Right? It's a microaggression, right? And, and as a black person, I do know what it feels like. So have trust that I am speaking from a place of experience and that what I'm experiencing is real. And that, and if you're the one that's causing me to feel that way, you need to figure out and check the reasons why.
Yeah, yeah. And don't we want this to keep going and growing where it might be a white person that would say, hey, that's racism. We need to be careful here. We need to make sure that we have the right mix around this table to collectively serve this community or whatever the organization might be.
That's right. Because at the end of the day, it's, the government can put all of these great grants and make all of this money available and all of these things. But it's who is the person that is giving you the money at the bank? Who is the person that is going to give you the job? That who is the, the place where things usually fall apart.
Yeah.
Right? So that's the area we really need to look at, the who. Who is making that final decision to say this person's going to get it or this person? And what is driving that person to say yes? And what is driving that person to say no?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? So those are the intersections of unconscious bias.
Yeah, yeah. Huge stuff, huge stuff.
But the beautiful thing is having the conversation.
Yeah.
How, and asking, did I do something? Did I say something that made you feel away?
Yeah.
You know, what did I do? And then, and not be defensive about it, just, just realizing, oh, that's an area that I need to work on and I need to change.
Yeah, yeah. And as we all do that, change will, will come. I, I know we're, we're almost out of time for, for today, but, but I wonder, Charmaine, about doing a podcast one day again on this issue and how we can work at this together in our city. Would love to do that. Yeah.
I would love to have the conversation. Absolutely.
Awesome. Well, hey, can I, can I pray for you as we, as we close today? And just appreciate you being a part of the Good News Podcast today. And, and the roles that you play in, in your home, but also in our city. Yeah.
Thank you. For sure.
Let's pray. Yeah. Loving and gracious God, thank you so much for the good news and for that you, you are good news. You bring good news. That's what Christmas is all about. So we thank you for your loving this world enough to come and enter in so fully and inviting us to do the same. Bless Charmaine and her family. Continue to be at the center of their home. We thank you for the unique role that you've called her to as a councillor. We pray for our, our city council, that they would continue to work together, that they would be led by you. And that we would continue as a community to recognize that racial reconciliation, racial justice is an issue that we all need to work on together. And that you will lead us into just a more equal life that we can live together in the city and beyond. Thank you for your joy, for serving and giving and loving and the opportunity you've given us all to do that. Bless it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, thank you Charmaine so much for joining us today. We will look forward to doing another one at some point down the, down the road.
Yes, we will. I'm always willing to, to talk and, and share with you guys. And thank you so much, Jamie, for being the blessing that you are for this, your church, our community. You have really pushed, pushed that envelope that we need to be, that needs to be pushed. And, and you always enter every conversation with so much joy and faith and love in your heart. And, and it's, you can feel it. I can, even though we're virtual, I can feel it. And I, and I feel your big warm hugs.
Well, absolutely.
Thank you for being such a blessing and you're, and you're. Thank you for being such a blessing and your, and your wife and kids. I, I pray that you have a very wonderful, peaceful Christmas. And yeah, send me the link so I can tune in to watch your Christmas special. My kids still ask, hey, when can we go back and like wear pajamas to church?
That's great. Absolutely. Well, thanks Charmaine. And, and we hope everyone, whether you're listening or watching this, that you receive that virtual hug today too. And may God bless you and be with you. Thanks for joining us. And thanks again, Charmaine. God bless you everyone.
Thank you for listening to the Good News Podcast with Jamie Holton. If you liked what you heard today, please share it with a friend who may benefit from today's conversation. And if you want to hear more, be sure to subscribe to this show and turn on your notifications so you never miss an episode. Thanks again. We hope you enjoyed today's discussion and we'll see you next time.